Thank you for giving your valuable time to be here this morning, especially all of you in the audience and general public. Golly, alright. Mr. Hewitt, do you want to take it from here or?
Uh, yes, sir.
Do you want me to do a public comment?
Well, you can press do.
All of you people have your comments. Hearing now we'll move on to the budget workshop, Mr. Hewitt.
Yeah, I just would like to begin with a preamble. There's a couple of things I want to bring to the board's attention. First of all, if you turn to page six in your package, the budget schedule remains very similar to what had originally been put forth and coordinated, but due to some availability issues, previously we had a public hearing scheduled for the 12th of June. We're gonna need to move that public hearing to the regular board meeting on the 18th. So, I've stricken it from this particular slide in the presentation. So, if you can make a note for yourself, that still leaves 12 days from whenever it would be entertained, the public hearing, and you can also consider it at that same meeting, but it would leave 12 days from there till when it has to be adopted. Secondly, what you're going to see today is a, or what's before you today is a very rough assemblage of staff inputs. We've had some limited dialogue between the department heads, myself, so the picture you see is nothing like, or I'm betting that the picture you see today is nothing like where we'll end up. In essence, we're, the hardest part of doing any job is getting the tools, getting all your tools collected, and that's the, that's the stage that we're in now, is we're just, you know, finding our screwdrivers before we start, start to work on it. Familiarization, if you will, and continuation of the goal-setting exercises exercised at the board conducted earlier in the year is what I'm going to ask your indulgence on, and there's a couple of questions that have come up through the staff's interaction and putting their inputs together that I'd like to get a little bit of clarity on from the board to see what you meant also, maybe to, even though we've got some scoring sheets on your, on your goals, perhaps if we can get some rankings established, and that coupled with some of the current and breaking events leads me to ask for your indulgence here in requesting just a brief go-through of some of those goals to flesh out what your ultimate intent and desire for the presentation of the budget final, where we end up with a final budget ordinance. So, without that, with that said, is it okay if we, if I ask you some questions based on your goals?
Sure.
By the way, yeah. There's, there's four things that are really current, current events that I want to lay before the board, and one, in terms of the sand search, you know, that is, we're, we're in the middle of attempting to get approval for projects related to Florence and Montreal, and because those hurricanes have come through and what our draft inputs going back to FEMA have shown in terms of total losses, we're anticipating a project being approved that's going to exceed the existing sand source that we've got currently permitted. So, we can either go ahead and start on doing that or push it into next year, next year's budget, but our concern is the timeline that it will take, the required time that it will take to do the work and get the sand source secured in the context of acquiring a permit and the deadline that we have to execute a FEMA project. So, we think that FEMA project's two years, get an extension for three, but our fear is that it may take up to a year to find the sand. And I can go through these, through these with you, or we can dialogue as, what's your, what's your pleasure? One of the, one of the things on starting a sand search now is, of course, we're gonna need to come to you for budget. I believe that's gonna be in the $150,000 range, and we believe that it'll be a reimbursable expense. That's undefined yet, but we, because it's related to a permit, we believe it will be a reimbursable expense. The second piece is, is that, or the second thing that we have questions on, in the, there were several areas in there that addressed personnel and compensation studies, there were two or three places where that came up to get a, have a, have a, have a study performed, and Lead Municipalities has actually secured a contractor that provides that type of thing for municipalities and other governments. If you want to do that kind of thing, you can do it, we can go ahead and do it this year. It's about $7,500. It'll take about three months and might be done before the budget has to be adopted. That's fairly evident. That was one of the things that the board wished to do. And it's, it's been about in excess of 15 years since we had a soup of nuts review of our position descriptions. You know, we did do a classification paid plan review on the chief a couple of years ago, but our personnel policies and our benefits package has not been dusted off in quite a while.
What was the cost associated with that?
About $7,500.
Seven percent.
The comment in here, even though it didn't score high under financing budget about no new borrowing, I'm assuming that that's going to be, that is predicated on a, you know, a mentality that, of course, we're not gonna borrow money for operations, and borrowing in terms of floating general obligation bonds for projects, that that's the context that that was put forth because right now, the amounts associated with the FEMA losses are going to far exceed our capital reserves ability to bring forward a project. I've got cash, flat cash flow concerns with the amount of FEMA project expense that we're anticipating to come in. So, I'm forecasting that we'll probably need to secure some type of bridge line in order to handle cash flow on the large FEMA expenses. That would be a year or two down the road whenever we get, you know, more information in on just exactly what the FEMA projects may be approved. And then lastly, I noted the, it was conspicuously absent, one is conspicuously obvious that advocacy in general is high on the board's agenda. Conspicuously absent, though, there was no mention, unless I, unless I just totally missed it, of anything related to emergency response or the types of things that go on during a hurricane operation. And I just wanna register with the commissioner that it's a concern of mine as to how we take care of the staff, some of the logistical realities of what goes on with the staff and your emergency responders. So, we, we have to make sure that that doesn't fall off the table whenever we're going through the budget exercise. Those are, that's just my preamble, and hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to dialogue that fairly succinctly and get effect on how you guys want me to proceed. Do you want me to go forth with a sand search this fiscal year?
I think it's a great idea personally, number one. Couple of questions. A sand search, would that include parallel paths, number one, with the area that we harvested the sand originally from and what's left there? Or would we begin looking someplace else?
We would need to look someplace else because there's only half million cubic yards left, and what we're anticipating is that we would do a re-up and basically redo in terms of a project to be equal size of the Central Reach project, which was about 1.3 million cubic yards. So, we're gonna need some more sand.
Yeah, based on our losses, current losses and everything else, I guess.
We're, we're gonna, we're gonna need to get a permit anyway to have a shovel-ready project. This, these storms have probably necessitated a bit more urgency.
David, when we did the Central Reach and you found that site, were there other sites identified in the process? Or was that the only one they found?
Generally, there are about three levels of reconnaissance that has to take place. So, we have, you know, a general search area, but depending on what the second and the third level reconnaissance in terms of detail reveal, we may have to go to other locations, specifically further offshore, which takes the price up. We don't know.
Is there also limitation, like north to south? How much, where do we have to go to get sand?
Below the high tide mark.
I meant north and south.
Just below the high tide mark.
East and west.
Well, you know, it's a, the distance that you go is strictly a matter of economics. Further you gotta go, more cost to get back.
And is anybody else harvesting along the east coast here? Anybody else going out and cut sources that they found?
Well, Ballhead Island is probably the closest one, and also North Myrtle Beach. Both of those have active projects. Ballhead Island, you know, is in the mouth of the Cape Girardeau, Jaybird Shoals, and right offshore of Ballhead Island. And then Little River, yeah, they've got, they're tapping into frying pan shoals, and then Little River is basically the, our same circumstance, when I say Little River. North Myrtle Beach is just like us in a lot of regards. So, those are, those are the two closest. Now, in terms of active permits, where there's been active projects, you know, going on, others may be looking, but I'm not lashed up to where they are.
Well, Oak Island still, David, I guess that was a question I had. You mentioned that this search should be or could be a reimbursable expense?
Because it's permit-related and your permit stuff, we've been successful in, we think we've been successful in the past on getting all of the permitted related type expenses back. Although FEMA still is holding on $335,000 of ours, that may just be that it's a, you know, it's a residual. They hold back until everything's finished, and I don't know exactly what is, what that block of money represents, but that just may be a chronological type holdback and not a categorical holdback. We've been successful in getting expenses reimbursed for legal easements, that kind of thing, and a lot of the sand search, offshore search before.
So, that, that being the situation, there's really, would you agree that there's no benefit in partnering with somebody else? Just because anybody who finds sand, the sand is open to anybody to harvest, right? So, you would think that if Oak Island, for instance, was going to be able to harvest from what we found, we would want them to share in the cost, but since we can be reimbursed and they don't have a permit, is it strategically better for us to go it alone, or should we have a partner in this search?
I see it as, it's really based on need, we're gonna need to get a permit, and we're gonna have a project that has a requirement, and if we want to go ahead and move forward with acquiring that permit, you know, I'm trying to take the path of the straightest line, shortest distance between the two dots.
I got you, but my question's a different one.
I know.
I agree with you.
And I don't know, and I don't know the answer.
But would you get a permit, the permit to put it on our beach?
Yes.
Or is it something to do with that specific site? Do we get any priority then? Or does somebody else who had a permit go and get it right in front of us?
The permit, when you get a permit for beach placement, it has to have a site deck or site sourced.
But somebody else could be at that same site.
A, a, I don't know.
But if they had a permit, like if Oak Island got a permit, we had one, we could both be shooting for the same spot.
Exactly. If, if we had a permit that's for a million yards and we've identified a million yards of sand, I don't know how permitting agencies would perceive that. I can't answer for them. But you gotta have a permit before you can do a project, and it takes a while to get a permit. If you wanna do it, you know, we're, we're gonna run into a time constraint.
So, the government doesn't permit sites, sourcing sites?
The government permits sites in terms of identifying a particular site related to you having a permit. You just don't get a permit to put sand on the beach without identifying the source, which identifying the source is much more than just the location and the volumes. You've got grain size analysis, color compatibility, there's a number of requirements that go into that.
But two or three islands could get the same, permit for the same source.
I, I cannot answer that. I do not know.
Well, you asked earlier, I'm not sure we gave you the answer, but in terms of timing, I'd wanna get after looking after it as soon as we could. I haven't seen delay.
Okay, then what we'll do is that we will, we will get a hard estimate from, from our consultant engineer on what that sand search entails in terms of cost, time, and effort. We do have a spitball estimate included in that budget. We'll back it out of the budget, and we'll tee it up for you in this year's, in this year's budget so that with a budget amendment here in the very near future, so we can get started on that.
Are we already active in getting a permit for the west end as well as the east end?
We don't have anything going on on the east end or on the west end at all. The Central Reach project ends at 781, 781 West. So, we have not entertained any expansion of the limits east or west of the Central Reach project. If y'all want to go there, it's gonna be an entirely new permit, a major modification to the existing permit, and is another order of magnitude in terms of expense. So, if you want, if you want our engineer to do that kind of thing, I need to know now so that we can get that program into the budget or the, or the projected budget so that we can have an assessment based on that.
I would think the board would wanna know upfront, what are we talking about? How much are we talking about?
Well, I can also tell you, I can also tell you that the existing limits of the Central Reach project are predicated on the core of engineers' analysis for the fifth-year project, and that it's no coincidence that that is, has already been engineered as the sweet spot for beach nourishment here at Holden Beach. So, if you guys want to go, if you guys want to get into that type of dialogue, it's not gonna be short. It's not gonna be sweet, and it's gonna take a lot of money in order to go through that engineering process. And I don't know how much money that would be. And I know that the west end has erosion down there, and I know that there's an inlet hazard area in Playland. But I'm just telling you, in order to do an engineering analysis on that, if it's, if it's your subjective opinion that you want to see where, how far west that the Central Reach project can extend, we're in another evolution of developing the permit. And just to add to that comment also, the FEMA project will not pay for anything west of 781 because it's just the engineered beach, okay, from Blockade Runner to 781.
So, it sounds, sounds like maybe our primary focus should be the losses that we've, we've had over the last number of storms and replacing that, that sand.
And that's not.
To strengthen the Central Reach program.
But we don't have any, anything, any way to get reimbursed for the sand we lost on the west end?
No, sir. It's not an engineered beach.
And, and the board doesn't know what we need to make it an engineered beach.
That's a question that we have to ask, that we have to ask ATM for an engineered recommendation on if west of 781, if it would have any, if it'd make any sense to extend it.
And east of the Central Reach as well, huh?
Yes, yeah.
Then is it safe to say what we're really talking about is we have, we are discussing two separate projects? One is to start the work that is going to replenish our central reach, which will be FEMA reimbursable because it's an engineered beach. There is a separate, and perhaps two separate, projects. One about the possibility and practicality of extending our engineered beach further west, and another, the same for going east and east into the inlet.
Now, regarding the Blockade Runner East, the interlocal agreement that will be put before you on the deeper wider project, we, we are insisting that, that an accommodation be made in that project so that there is a design beach field template for Blockade Runner East that would potentially meet the requirements for an establish, to establish that reach as an engineered beach, i.e., right now, where we are is basically, everything that gets put on the east end down there is because it's a byproduct of an inlet navigation project and doesn't qualify because it doesn't, the sand just put up there and bulldozed down without any measurement or design template, so it's the primary way that you establish a engineered beach and acquire that blessing from FEMA. So, you know, that, that may be one way to approach that, is to let that be the initial foray into getting that established as an engineered beach project. Now, we do have the SDI-5 permit for that already, you know, and so that may already satisfy that requirement as far as an engineered beach status whenever that project is upgraded through the major modification permit process and we get a design template that meets the requirements. So, that may be the answer. If, if the, if the board is in agreement with spending a million dollars on the deeper water project, which is roughly the buggy that we're coming in on.
So, we're still talking about a separate project to evaluate extending west?
West.
What? West.
Yeah.
West.
West, yeah.
I live there. I know west.
Yeah, yeah. And, I mean, and that can be done, you know, and if that's, you know, my question to you is, what's your pleasure on that? Do you want that put into the one July budget? Do you want to start on that? Because we don't have money in this year's budget to do it specifically dedicated to that, without reprogramming.
I, personally, I would think it goes into the one July budget and it becomes a next year priority, personal opinion.
Okay.
Not trying to expedite too many things at once, and it's much more important to expedite the sand search than the Central Reach fix because that is a known, and that is a clear reimbursable and something we would like to begin sooner than later. If other things follow by a year, again, it's, as you say, sand goes east to west, so there is some repair over time.
Well, I mean, with that said, it's what I'm hearing is that we're going to go ahead and move forward with sand search this year. We'll do the appropriation. We'll pull it out of next year's budget. Sand search should be primarily oriented towards the Central Reach Project Two, and then we'll do, we'll need to get an engineer's estimate for evaluating what the, what, if any, expansion west on the Central Reach Project Two might be. Is that what I'm hearing from the board?
I mean, I can't speak for everybody. It makes sense to me, though.
Okay, I, I need y'all, I need, I need y'all to tell me what you want me to do for the budget.
My input would be, I'd wanna start the search immediately to find the sand, and as quickly as we can, if it's June, June 30th or whatever, get busy for the board knowing what's involved in making the west end and the east end part of the engineered beach. We don't, we don't have inputs. We can't make a decision, so I'd wanna leave the inputs as quick as we could.
I think what David is saying, the east end is part of that project.
Yes, it's gonna be incorporated.
Yeah, it's gonna be incorporated in that, so we don't wanna do anything to confuse that.
No, we don't wanna confuse it.
We wanna move ahead with that.
And we use the term a million dollars for sand, but on that wider, deeper, if that's a lot of sand, that's gonna be a great deal.
And then the next recommendation is, the third one is the west end.
Okay.
I, I would like to throw something in here, if I may.
Sure.
The west end hasn't been that many years ago until the, the high tide line was up closer to the houses. The accretion factor has been wonderful to the west end over the last few decades. I would encourage the board to consider a policy of determining where, when, how to put sand on the, on the beachfront. Not just from a whim of saying, let's immediately add to our program, but you're going to have a public relations problem with the majority of the property owners, not on the extreme west end, whenever you've got hundreds of yards between the house and the ocean down there, and you've got hundreds of feet elsewhere on the island. Because those people that are more at risk, which is gonna be. Because those people that are more at risk, which is going to be the majority of the island, they're going to question you, is why are you going to spend a lot of money down there that is not as threatened as it is elsewhere on the island, if you follow what I'm saying? So you need to have a defense for your thinking and your planning, rather than just doing something that sounds good and saying, we're going to make everybody happy by making the whole oceanfront of Holden Beach an area that we're going to spend money on putting sand, whenever you've got some areas that are more threatened than others. I'm just saying, maybe you need to have a policy before you just leap forward and, and announce that you're going to spend tons of money from end to end of the island. I hope I'm saying that in a way that makes sense, but I can just feel the thunder coming. If you've got parts of the island that need worse than others, and you're going to leap off to an area that maybe is not threatened.
I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm thinking of right now, I'm not thinking of West End as beyond the gate, I'm just thinking of everything west of where the engineered beach ends, which ending before eight hundred, we've still got some pretty skinny areas between eight hundred and eleven hundred that, so it's, it's the evaluation of, I guess I think of it as evaluation of end to end, not a, not a clear, we need to do something end to end, but have, it, it's like, is the engineered beach, as David said, is it ending at the true sweet spot? Should it go further west or not? And have that as an examination. I like your idea of policy of, you know, what makes you react, is basically what you're saying. What's your data, what's your rationale? But, but reexamining, is the sweet spot right, seems to me to be a legitimate question that, that we could address. Is, is it, we should be going to a thousand? You know, I, it's, if there's, there's...
Or, or should it cut off soon?
Yeah, right, there's so...
So we'll, we'll ask that, is, 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 is seven eighty-one the right place? Should it go further? Should it cut, or should it chunk it?
Does, does that make you feel more secure about what our intent is right now?
I think that's a better summary than I did.
I think, I, I mean, it seems to me like it's relative. I know, we know that, that homes have been lost on the East End. I don't think we've lost any homes on the West End. And in fact, we've had a lot of discussion about dunes being so large, whether we should have to walkways extend beyond a dune or not. So it seems to me like there's an adequate buffer on the West End, and I think that's what you were saying. So it's something we have to consider, but is it something that we have to worry about even in next year's budget to, to expend that kind of money? Or is it something we just want to look at? Get a, get a rough estimate of what the cost to actually do the work, because just to, just to extend, I, I don't think, to, to go back, I don't think we want to restrict the beach we already have because every storm we have, the more engineered beach we have, the better chance we have of recouping money and to put the sand back. So I don't think we want to restrict it, that, when we do this reevaluation. But if we're going to ex- extend it, we would want to know what the cost would be for every forty mile or half miles before we get into actually trying to allocate funds for that.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a good point. We'll ask, um, our, our consultant engineer, uh, to include that type of, of value analysis in his evaluation, um, you know, what would be the incremental cost, uh, to, to do that. You know, do a, do a, a survey reconnaissance on, you know, the efficacy of, of expanding that termination point, and then also, um, to bring back what, uh, you know, in terms of evolving, uh, cost, what that might be. You guys are a long way from being able to make a decision on, on, on allocating funds for a project, you know? So that's what we'll do, is get, get some beans back in front of you, uh, in order to, uh, help that along.
I want to say one more thing about it, and then I'll be quiet. The West End, if we do have a real hurricane, when that water comes out of the Salt River, it's going to go to the ocean, and it's going to go straight to the ocean, and it's going to flatten everything down there.
From the backside.
From the backside, the dunes are all going to be gone, as it did in Haiti. So my question to you, David, is, if that indeed happens, what's the possibility of reimbursement of the government? If it's not part of a engineered beach, is there any policy in regards to that?
You got me.
Well, we've already lost half the dune, right? On the West End? I watched last year, right, the ATV.
Okay, big.
It went away with one more storm, if it took it from the ocean side, not the riverside, the ocean side, the water could be up to the base of the houses after that.
Okay, but let me, let me just tell you the big, the big picture. The big picture is that the island on the West End has accreted hundreds of yards in the recent decades. From the middle of the island, eastward, we have lost hundreds of feet. So loss, gain. Do you throw money where you gained, or do you throw money where you lose? You know, that's kind of, and I'm done with that.
I think I've got enough to work with on, 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 on that question.
Yeah.
The, the, uh, to the question of the, um, the third-party contractor for a compensation plan, uh, we can probably get that done, uh, in this year's budget, it'll take about, um, three months. I don't know if it can be done before the end of the fiscal year. Um, what, what's your thoughts on that? How important is it to you? Do you want to wait till, uh, the, the upcoming budget to do that kind of thing? It will be, uh, somewhat disruptive for the staff because there's an interrogatory process that happens, uh, with, with that, um, especially when we're going to the, um, the redesign or, uh, establishing the adequacy of existing, uh, position descriptions. But, um, I'd like to get a, what y'all want me to do with that one.
I guess I'll go first. It, it seems to me like it will be money well spent. There, there's been some discussion from the board about certain aspects of the compensation packages, whether they're adequate or inadequate or excessive. And it will help address one of the issues that was pointed out in the recent internal audit, uh, review. So I think that for seventy-five hundred dollars, we'll have independent people look at, look at those two issues and help rectify it. If there are any problems, uh, note it.
If I can add also that, um, the subcontractor for the league does not limit their comparisons just to government employees, they look at, um, private sector-like, um, jobs. So it's not just, um, you know, it's, it's not just comparing to local governments.
My only question on waiting until the next fiscal year would be, would it be better to do it when we've got the new budget that will have the most current, what the salaries and the benefits are after this cycle? It'd be fresh data. I can see it either way, you know?
When you say fresh data, the, the...
It'd be the up-to-date, here's the new salaries, here's the new bene, it, it's, that's what I mean, it's starting with the fresh data. Although, again, it's probably pretty much of a standard what the increases have been over the years. As, as I said, I can see it either way. Money is not the object, I don't think, the seventy-five hundred dollars.
I figure we'd have done it as soon as possible.
Yeah, I would say that the fact that we haven't done it for a period of time...
A long period.
Yeah, a long period of time. I've, I've got to say, let's do it, uh, as soon as possible.
Okay. I would say that this is the busiest time of year for everybody, as they are trying to put the budget together and prepare for the season. And given David's comment, I'm not trying to delay things, but if you're thinking of an additional time burden on the staff at what is, I think without argument, the busiest time of the season for everybody, do you, do you want to ask them to take that additional time out when everybody's pretty much cranking at full tilt?
Um, I, I look at it, um, in a, kind of a, a different light in that, um, um, whenever we ask people to talk to a consultant for a classification and paid plan study, they'll probably be eager to, uh, engage because it's, it's directly related to, um, you know, to their pocketbook. So, um, you, you know, it, that, that work is going to be there, and to the, to the, it's the busiest time of year, uh, comment, I, I'm going to talk about how busy we are. We, we've been busy for a long time, and we're going to be busier for a longer time, especially getting back on track from these storms. And I know that, yeah, the storms were five months ago, but these hurricanes and the reconstitution and the logistics and work tale that's associated with that, that is, that is going, we are going to be burdened with that for the next three years. It ain't going to get any less busy up here for anybody. So this is, this is just another, um, a log in the, in the back of the truck, you know, we, and it's just work, is, is the way we're looking at it. So I would, I'm glad that it appears that the board wants to go ahead and get this done. Um, no, nobody wants to make it happen quicker than I do. Um, it's, it's one less thing, we can, we can go ahead and move on with it and get it done. And the price tag can be put back in front of the board, because, um, it has been some time. I think that we're pretty close with what we did in terms of the classification and paid plan piece of it a couple of years back. The benefits evaluation, um, there may be some change in that, have no idea exactly what that'll be, but, uh, I, I totally anticipate there to be an increase, um, that comes out of it. Um, I, I don't, I don't forecast that there's going to be any reduction in what the results. I'll just go ahead and put that in front of you. It's been so long since we've done a soup to nuts comparison. I may be wrong, but without doing it, we won't know. We're spitting in the wind, so...
I'm fine, I just raised the one question. I'm, I'm fine with it, expediting and starting it and getting it done under the issues budget.
I think the league, league probably has also a, a boilerplate, uh, scope of work that they do, and, uh, I think, I'd, I'd like to see it.
You mean it's probably fee is a non...
Not, not only the fee, John, but I'm concerned about this...
If you went outside for the fee though, it's not seventy-five hundred, you're looking at twenty grand or something like that.
The stop work.
Outside for...
I just want to see the stop, stop work.
Okay. So would, would you prefer that I, that I, um, bring that back to the board, or, um, go ahead and move forward with it and then just share the scope of work with you, um, offline?
Yeah, I, I suggest we move forward.
Okay, all right, I'll do that. Um, regarding the bridge loan, this is not the DOT bridge loan, I just want to go ahead and say that for the benefit of the, of the press involved in here. We have nothing to do with what's going on, on the bridge right now. Um, we know less after seven conversations with DOT over the course of the last two weeks than we did before. Um, that, the, what I'm calling a bridge loan, um, as I said before, um, I, I just, my intent is to make sure that the board isn't, um, predisposed against taking a loan out in the short term in order to meet what I anticipate to be some cash flow issues whenever we have to get to a, I mean, we're fronting thirty million dollars over the course of, you know, say, six months, you know, where, where, um, I have concerns over, um, cash flow there, and I'm not sure that the local government commission would allow us to even contract for that type of project, um, in that size of project without some type of bridge financing. I, uh, I took the occasion last week at a finance officers conference, y'all may have read the trip report, um, that I submitted to you, but this is not, not anything new, it is a mechanism that, um, the local government commission is familiar with, and, um, so when we get to that point, we'll have a better handle on it. But I just wanted to put in, um, you know, that qualifier. I, I understand what you, your desire to not take on any debt is, but this, this would affect, is I think we're going to be in a position that we need, we're going to need to take out a payday line.
But that's a short term.
Yeah, yes.
Not a long term.
Right, yeah, right.
I think the board is thinking, don't borrow ten million dollars and build something or spend it.
For ten years.
You're never going to get it back.
Right.
This is something you're going to pay money, but you're going to need it back.
Yeah, and, and we're...
It's this financing credit card.
It's just like selling a house, buying a house.
Exactly.
Yes, sir. Yeah. We're, we're still going to need to have the local government commission to approve it, we're still going to need to, uh, uh, find a lender, uh, for that, so, but, um, we'll, we'll be in a be- better position to, um, you know, bring that specifics back for the board, once we get a FEMA project approved.
Right.
Just to add, ask a question on, on that. We have X number of dollars in, in BPAR.
Yes, sir.
When we get a FEMA project and work is done, we, we have to pay upfront for that work to be done, and then we submit to FEMA, they reimburse us. Can we have that, does that work on a rolling scale?
It does. It, it, it does.
So if we get the money back in time, we can use the same money to pay it two or three or four times as it's supposed to?
A thirty million dollar project, once we get into cash flow analysis, we may only need to get twelve million in a bridge loan. You know, we, we'll have to walk around that one a couple of times and, and, and see what the sweet spot is on what our, what our cash flow is. Emergency response. You know, this is probably the longest live hurricane duration, um, this past fall that, um, I've been a part of, not, not just, um, the reconstitution piece of it, but the actual, you're buttoned down and, um, and you, you can't go anyplace. So, um, there, there are some, uh, practical things that we need to make sure that our, that our staff is taken care of during that time, um, all the, you know, ranging just from, we, we've got to make sure that they're sheltered, they got food, and, and that they're taken care of and those kinds of things. So, um, I have to hard scrub the budget, but we'll be, um, we'll be looking at those types of things, uh, to make sure that, that there's accommodations, uh, taken care of for staff. And that's, that's it, y'all. Without further ado, we can roll right into the, the spreadsheet itis portion of it, um, unless the board wants to...
Roll on, we'll hear the check.
Manny's going to lead us through the, the revenues and expenses, and the department heads are, are here for, uh, for specificity.
Like David said earlier, this is a pretty, um, first draft sort of, of our fly-high details. So, you guys, this is the budget schedule we've been over. This is just the purpose of the presentation. Our state, our revenues, our revenues by fund are the same we have general, water, EPAR capital judging, our capital reserve funds, our capra, and our beach nourishment and inlet management. Our state distribution taxes, they're the same, um, we get about the same each year. Some go up, some go down, depending on how the market in North Carolina is going. Our town-generated revenue... Our town generated revenues are property tax, living fees, recycling fees and rent and conditions. This year, we did have a reappraisal of the personal accounting, so when we do that in budget world, we have to calculate a revenue mutual tax. And I'm sure that you guys have read this, if you want me to reread it, I can. I'm a little gibberish. But for the purpose of just going through it, we don't have a lot of hard numbers to work with, but I did sort of go through and do a few calculations that you guys have seen. Do you have any questions on that?
So, so I, I personally haven't had time to go, go through the book and that, you know, we just got it yesterday afternoon and I wasn't home last night at all. But some of the, some of the questions I, I would have pertaining to the, the evaluation of homes, and I did get my Brunswick County tax bill, or, you know, an indication that my taxes are going to go up. So, is this also an indication that the taxes are going to go up to the residents on Holden Beach?
No, this is a practice, I don't know, I can't speak for Brunswick County taxes, but you guys set that tax rate. This is just exercise that you have to do each reappraisal year. You do not have to adopt the reappraisal tax amount, it's just an exercise that they like you to do every four years when you get your reappraisals. And it looks like ours, from what we got, David got from the county was eight point eight nine percent increase, so.
But they haven't adopted any, any plan, a rate-
No, no, this is still very early. This is just like an exercise in just putting numbers on paper to see what it would look like.
Okay.
None of these numbers are set in stone or something.
So, this is just a paper exercise, okay.
Yeah, basically.
So, a hundred thousand dollars increase in, in overall value wouldn't change the twenty-two cent rate for the-
It doesn't really look like it from what I've, from the, the spreadsheets that I've worked with, it doesn't really look like it to me. Like I said, the numbers might not be exactly right, so they might change when I get better estimates, but right now, these are the estimates that I just put together through last audits. And we don't have the year, this year's audit numbers to work with and so I had to inflate, you know, the eight point eight percent, just get the numbers I needed.
Well, the fact is, what's going to happen is on the island, there are going to be people whose assessments go down, there's going to be people whose assessments go up. So, assuming we stay close to the twenty-two cents, if your house assessment went up a hundred thousand dollars, yes, you are going to pay more city tax, but there's going to be properties that went down fifty to a hundred thousand dollars. I have a lot of neighbors that they went down, I went up. We balance out. It's not that each individual is going to be looking at the same change. Some will go down, some will go up, the island stays neutral.
Sure, based on the assessment, I clearly understand that.
And at the, at the county level, they're going through the same discussions of whether or not they are going to keep their rate where it is or are they going to lower it because they have other things. So, between city and county, we could see things go up, we could see things stay the same, we could see things go down.
But the residents on Holden Beach that have seen a, an increase in the assessment value of their home, potentially are going to see an increase in-
If we stay at twenty-two cents, yes.
Yeah, okay.
If you stay at twenty-two cents and the values went up nine percent islandwide on the average, the town's going to get more money.
And maybe not, maybe not, because the other variable that's in there is the collection rate.
Which we don't know yet.
The collection rate.
Sorry if it was different.
Collection rate goes down.
And the money's going to go down.
So, there's, there's three pieces that are still up in the government.
I just did, based on last year's estimated tax base, I increased it eight point eight nine percent, left the tax collection rate and what was last, the other year, because we don't have a new one, left it at twenty-two cents. And two point eight nine seven one eight oh is the number that I got for the tax revenue, but like, like I said, that could change depending on the collection rate, what our tax base comes back to being. It's just an exercise, basically. Do you guys have something to add?
That's, that's the revenue that we're using in the revenue projection that we're using in the spreadsheet right now at this time.
Yes.
It's a two point eight nine.
Yeah, that's, when you, when you look at the spreadsheet, you'll see that in the tax revenue. Recycling fees, they run up this year, we deal about twenty-nine thousand dollars, but we do have to pay the county back, so there's kind of a give and take there, we don't get that much back. Rents and concessions, we get about a hundred and five thousand dollars yearly, this changes each year depending on what the sale company decides to do. And we had, we had a discussion with Noel last meeting about the contracts and how she was going to review them to see if they were even viable, so I'm not sure if this is going to be staying the same at all as well either. The water and sewer fund, our revenue from there is still the same as usual, we're happy with sewer fee, we have our tax bills and the water and sewer bill. We have not changed our water rate structure rate and we have not changed our sewer rate structure, so this is the same as last year. The B part fund is estimated, the occupancy tax will be about one point eight million this year. We have, we have, they have added some progress, I T, Shag Ocean, so that's going to bring in a little bit of revenue, but it's not anything new.
Hey, and Manny, can you go back to the rents and concessions slide?
Okay.
I, I want to just make a point that those, that, those rents and concessions, those are in the waterfront.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so we're, we're pulling down about a hundred thousand dollars a year in the antenna farm that Chris has got growing up on top there. That's, you might as well say that's a penny in tax right there. I just want to make that clear.
And just, just about each one of those renters has asked for a reduction, we haven't given any, has, has there been anybody who's canceled that contract yet?
No, sir.
The last one here, the increased amount of investment on interest, we have moved some money to higher investment entities, so we're getting a lot more return on our money than we have been in the past, which is a good thing, we're getting a lot more back than we ever have since I've been here. And that is all going to fund for state right now, so that's good news. Hopefully it's safe to say. The capital reserve and beach management fund, you guys set this up last year on July. I just sort of left this in here for you guys to have a reminder slide of what that goal was for you guys to have with the B part fund. I know you've talked about it in a couple of meetings, I just wanted to put it back up there for you. The current, the money in the fund, the fund money is there and it's at three two four one eight seven seven, so we did move the money over and it's showing in the capital reserve, three is showing in this one that is there.
And this'll, this'll come out in, in the revenue slide, but I know that there was, in one of the goals, it was talking about updating fund balance policies. One of the things that we have realized, and, and I know this may be way down in the weeds, but we recently amended the fund balance policy that's, our interlocal agreement with Brunswick County on our special obligation bond that has our million bucks escrowed with them, we put a rider clause in there that as the obligation reduces, Brunswick County remits the delta each year back to the town. Not only do they remit the delta, but they also remit the interest to us. So, in the revenue line, on your spreadsheet there, it will show that they've given us, we have budgeted twenty-six thousand dollars, which was the delta reduction coming back to us, but we actually got about ten thousand dollars more in actual proceeds. I only point that out is that our, I'm not sure that if our fund balance policy talks about, when we recently updated it, we said that we'd stick that money, we escrowed that returned delta into the beach and inlet management fund. We'll look, we'll look again to see if it specifically addresses the interest on it because that interest should go in the inlet management fund too. We'll look at that, I just wanted to register that, make sure Heather catches it and so we can come back to it. We may need to just, it's a small thing, but it's, it makes it so much easier from a, a policy execution standpoint if we've got those, those details in there. But that's a, that's a good one, we've got ten thousand dollars more than we thought we were going to get back. And, and that was the interest on that money that they had. All right.
The Canadian working group, a couple of weeks together gave us their estimates. Harbor acres went down to one fifteen, but heritage harbor and North Beach harbor stayed the same, so, and that's a, just a group that's, you know, they work together, it's easy, it's not really that, doesn't have that much impact. Capital reserve funds, they are not in here as need or as the capital reserve plan because, like I said, these are working documents and I, it's really hard to put those together and we don't have finalized, you know, what you guys want to put in those, in those funds and plans. And then I guess you have next to the spreadsheet, I almost lied on those, so if you have any questions about the spreadsheets and-
One thing I'll point out is that we've got revenues and expenses, but we haven't done the revenues equals expenses part of the equation yet, so that's, I, I haven't even looked at it yet to see, you know, how far out of whack we are. That'll, that'll be the next go around.
I have.
Now, Manny says a lot.
Okay, I have a question on page twenty-four, general fund revenues, because we had the seventeen eighteen over miscellaneous. We're budgeting seventy thousand and-
Seventy thousand.
Seven thousand, seven thousand, sorry, and as of two nineteen nineteen, we're at forty-three, four sixty. I just, that, that's a catch-all for some stuff. I think we need to redefine what that stuff is and maybe get more accurate.
That's the actual for eighteen nineteen?
As of two nineteen.
As of two nineteen, yeah.
Where, I'd have to double check that, but-
I think, I want to say off the top of my head, and this could be wrong, so don't help me, but I think that's our sales tax reimbursement, that just hasn't been to be out, hasn't been moved to funds yet, to fund ten, thirty and fifty that we give back.
And a piece of that are the early letter FEMA reimbursements that we've stuck in miscellaneous. We're waiting to see, we just got confirmation today that, that our category B in terms of ninety thousand dollars has been approved and we wanted to get that approved before we came back officially with a budget amendment in order to stuff the money back into the correct funds. When we get over into the expense spreadsheet, remember I told you guys that we've blown our overtime budgets, so we're going to have, when we got the first FEMA reimbursements, we stuck them in that miscellaneous line, knowing full well that we're going to have to come back in and put it in the right accounts. This was a get it in the bank, short-term fix until we get the FEMA low letter reimbursements quantified a little bit better.
But it's a good, it's a good question from budgeting because last year, you budgeted seven thousand, but collected twenty-two, almost twenty-two thousand.
And-
This year, you're budgeting seven, you've got forty-three thousand already and you're doing seven thousand next year.
And, and again-
It draws attention.
But, and again, those were most likely residual FEMA reimbursements, they were cats and dogs as they came in.
Is it easier to put it in miscellaneous than it is into the right account?
Well, that's a revenue, that's a revenue count. And, and depending when they come in, in the category of where they come in, without going back and look, I'm just assuming that those were, those were FEMA reimbursements, but we'll, we'll double check on that.
And so if they were a FEMA reimbursement and you just parked it for a certain period of time to do the clerical work?
Right.
Where would, where would that, for argument's sake, where would that other fourteen thousand dollars have gone to?
We, we would actually have a FEMA reimbursement line.
I might go back to the second line there on your abnormal taxes. You said it depends on the payout rate for, for taxes, but this year, we've, we've budgeted two six sixty, we're budgeting two six sixty for eighteen nineteen, with the nineteen twenty, is it two million nine?
Yeah, two million eight and there was a-
Two million nine, two eight nine seven.
There was a slide that I showed you how I got to that number.
I did, except if you're using the same discount rate, I'm not sure how you end up making a quarter of a million dollars more without, without, you know, if you don't, you said you have an allowance, is it?
Well, we haven't, but we, that's, that's also got an increase of eight point eight nine percent in there.
All right, so we're, so we are going to get, we're going to quarter million dollars more money, so it's not, it's not revenue neutral.
No, that was just exercise, that, this, that, that number we said is not revenue neutral, that's the twenty-two cents and the eight point nine, eight point eight nine increase. That's not the revenue neutral tax rate.
If you're revenue neutral, you've got to lower the rate.
Well, but the revenue neutral is published, but it also includes a growth factor that has to be accommodated in there too.
It's a four-year average.
It's a four-year rolling average of that.
At the end of the day though, if you look at it, between last year's budget and this year's budget, general revenues were anticipating an increase of almost a quarter of a million dollars.
We're not going to say that. We're going to say that we're putting in a, a revenue neutral, that we've calculated for exercise purpose. This is not a recommended number, we're just saying that this is a working, this is one type. Yeah, but I'm scared about saying that we're getting a quarter million dollars more based on a, a tax rate that's been put forward by the budget officer. We're, we're, I want to be real specific, this is what our calculation at twenty-two cents is projecting. It's real rough, there's three variables involved in it.
We have not got there.
We haven't got there yet.
All, all I'm doing is looking at the figures. I'm looking at last year's budget and what is either, you can call it anticipated, projected or whatever, there's a difference of close to a quarter of a million dollars. Is that, is that fair to say?
I mean, that, that math is a quarter of a million dollars. I don't know how accurate that math is.
I have another question on a sheet which goes to David probably on page twenty-seven. You've said several times, we're still waiting for that last reimbursement on Matthew and I noticed that you didn't put anything in for nineteen twenty against Matthew, is it just at this?
We'll close that out if they'll go ahead and get it in.
You mean, you're thinking you might still get it this year?
Yeah, yeah.
So, if we don't get it this year, we'll assume we'll get it next year.
Yeah, and, and the way that works, if you look at the FEMA Irene five five nine grant that's down, there was no money budgeted for it that year, it just hits the actual, we just ring it in in the actual amount. Revenues are different than expenses, I don't have to have a budget of revenue to accept it. You know, we can, we can, we can accept it, so if it comes in after one July, we're not, we're not budgeting the Matthew expenses because remember, that's a reimbursement, that money's already been spent.
I know it's a reimbursement.
It'll, it'll just fall into unobligated fund balance.
But David, pardon me on this, but you've got a six million dollar budget for seventeen eighteen. Is that cash flow, this is a cash flow budget, right?
The FEMA Matthew budget there?
Yeah, six million dollar.
Yeah.
Whenever, whenever we did-
Yeah, whenever, whenever we did...
Seven thirty, seven thirty-three.
We, we actually carried basically what in essence is a capital project over multiple years, and just carried the entire budget on the expense side and the revenue side forward.
Even though you had collected it already?
We had, yes, that's correct.
Do you guys, Heather, do you guys want to move to expenses, Heather, will you? Um, you guys, there are expenses by fund, um, fund ten is general, pretty water, hit DB part, and sixteen capital reserve. Fund ten, we have the government body, administration, police department, building inspection, streets, and sanitation. In the governing body, um, there's a couple increases they got added this year. The, our debt, well, our debt service went down, um, which it does each year, um, then there was an increase for live streaming capabilities for meetings, um, and then an increase for satellite handheld, which, when I'm going through each of these, these are department, these are also department questions, if you guys have any questions, I can try to answer from the departments, if not, they're all here. So, just looking at it. Um, the police department has a request for additional officer, um, they'll probably have more training opportunities, they would like two new police vehicles, vehicles, and new uniforms for nine officers.
Did we set up a process or a system pertaining to vehicles, so many vehicles every so many years?
What we did was adopted a replacement resolution at seven years, seventy thousand miles. The, uh, the two new police vehicles, one is a replacement, um, in accordance with that schedule, and the other one is the matching vehicle, which over the additional officer that's being requested.
Um, there's not much difference in building inspections, they are requesting a vehicle, um, Ronos vehicle is very old, um, is definitely within the requirements of the replacement policy, um, new, more increase in travel and training, um, the beach ranger program, equipment line is in B part, but I put it here because if you had any questions about it, Tim is the one who handles it, so, just on the slide. Um, they bought their equipment last year, so it went down this year. Streets and paving, this year they're going to do half of Brunswick Avenue East, and that's about one hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. They would like a streets vehicle, the last one they had was in two thousand nine, um, they, oh, they...
Question, is that Brunswick Avenue East or, or West?
Brunswick Avenue East.
Is it the, the one for the bumps?
West, oh, sorry, west, that was my bad.
It should be A W.
B A W.
B A W, yeah, yeah. It's the eastern half of Brunswick Avenue West, yeah.
The, there's an increase in the contracted service line due to the new ordinance and the, uh, roll back islandwide, and then each year, either equipment new or mine, I suppose that's up just due to the costs associated with their, any new forms.
Okay, I, I wanna, um, reiterate, um, our understanding, and, and the board is, if I'm being redundant, just hitting inside the head here, but Brunswick Avenue West, the intent is to resurface the, the entire length of Brunswick Avenue West, and basically move it to the front of the line in our streets, um, priority system, and then we'll take down the first half of it in the upcoming, in the upcoming budget, and then the second half of it in the subsequent budget. So that's, that's, um, that's our, I guess spitball understanding, we had to put it in the capital improvement plan, you know, our capital improvement plan does reflect that street characterization, but that's our understanding of what, uh, the board's direction was at the, I believe it was practice, October, maybe.
Yeah, well, I think what we wanted to do was make sure that the, the first phase works before we spend the money on the whole thing.
Right, okay, that, that, that's what we believe in our strategy.
Yeah, those numbers are based off the engineer's objective cost too, he presented at that time, and that's, hopefully that'll come in right around that, if I'm doing any judgment, but I guess we'll know that until we actually get there.
Fund thirty, water and sewer fund, um, they have an increase in communications for SADA and intensive annual support for compatible cell phones, I'm assuming that's for the sewer lift station, new capabilities, um, they have a request for one additional labor in the water department, they would like to replace another vehicle with a hundred and forty thousand miles, and then the sewer capital line shows the lift station, sewer lift station three that we budgeted for last year in the capital renewal plan, but that, I guess, could probably change a little bit as well, depending on what we get back on.
Um, could, could we sidebar just a moment and let Chris give you an update on where we are with lift stations for status, um, our current request for qualifications, that is due on Friday, and just, just where we are with that, sorry to catch you cold, Chris, but I think it'd add value to, um, how, how we're, where we are, where we are now.
Yeah, we're pretty close wrapping up that project, and we've actually put out for bids for engineering services, and that's due, I think, tomorrow at twelve o'clock, so I guess whatever we get in, I would put something in your packet about actually selecting an engineer to proceed with pump station three, um, I don't know if there's anything I ain't said that you want to say in regards to that, David, but we are pretty close to wrapping up on that project, I'm thinking by the end of this month, maybe we'll be completely through with that, and the budget does have the, uh, costs in there for this upcoming year for engineering services, pump station or engineering construction of pump station three. Basically about sums of the, if I've forgotten anything, he almost gave me a key, maybe it come to mind. And also, well, he left us at sewer, but, you know, I got a floor, I'll go ahead and throw this in, I hated the request for additional help in the water department, but actually we've been stretched pretty thin for, for a number of years, back two thousand three, we had six employees here, but then he never worked in sewer system, um, I know y'all probably know, you know, like David said, it's been busy for the past two or three years, I mean, we don't really catch a break, you know, another thing, if you have a storm or something like that, it's pretty, it's a pretty big burden on this department, just that few handful of employees we've got, be able to try to get this island where we can actually come back, and, um, I hope maybe you take that into consideration, and we can get some additional help. Other than that, that's about all I got.
How many do you have now, employees?
I've got six, but I've actually had one that's been out and worked for years with a, so I've been five employees myself and one greenhorn, uh, so, three old timers and then, and one old timer here jumping around back and forth.
Has it been six all the time, Chris, or?
Yes, it's been six for the past three, four years, we, we cut a position, what was it, maybe about three or four years ago, um, didn't feel like the needed at that time, but I've re, rethought that sense, and, you know, like I said, sewer system getting over, even though we got the upgraded pump stations, there's still a lot of footwork and the, the service level that's expected and what we provided, man, we're stretched, thinking, you know, even, even if you get an emergency situation like in that storm there, even if you had pulled the fast even an additional employee, it's, it's, it's pretty thin, you know?
Thin, thin, thin equates to risk.
Do I?
Thin equates to risk.
Yes, it does.
There's a risk associated with that.
It sure does, I mean, and, you know, we got it to be in a big, big package here with the town, but I guess we're right upstate, they so overloaded that that one person going to the doctor, taking a vacation, they just puts, puts a, puts a big burden on everybody, you know, it's time to, it's time to do something, that's where I'm at right now.
Yeah, yeah, I appreciate you speaking up.
Well, thank you.
The person that's out on, been out for a year, are they out on long-term disability, or are they still being compensated?
They've had some back surgery and actually been dropping workers' conference wages, so I'm thinking that's coming pretty close to the head, whether they're gonna come back or not, I, I do not know, but it's getting pretty close to the time where life's gonna continue to proceed, you know, one way or the other, if it's a replacement or what that be. And I'd also like to say, I, I have been pretty blessed, that I have, most of our staff, staff have been, you know, pretty long timers, and, you know, a lot of them pretty educated, I know what they do, uh, myself and a few more, as we start going out the door, it's time enough to be able to have people that can step up and, and fill in the gaps and, and, and life continue on this merry way, but, you know, having somebody hunt for outside sources or something, and I know, uh, having people trained and be able to fill in the next tier of is a, is a, is a good thing.
Anybody near retirement in the next five years?
Can't, can't, well, no, we can't hold back.
I can, I can probably phrase that question a little bit, but, yeah.
We'll be, we, we, um, we'll be glad to provide the board with, um, higher dates, which is a, which is a public record.
Yeah, yeah.
That was exciting.
Yeah, appreciate it, Chris, thank you.
Um, fund fifty, um, I guess the first one that we can move to this year, you guys just made that decision for me, um, they, they added some additional funds for lobbyists and UNCW collaboration, um, they, she increased the training line this year because boards were going to more meetings and getting, um, more training, um, they would like to secure a intern for some months to help out with all the programs that she does, um, the deeper wider project is on here, um, I'm not sure you got your, um, decision on that, and her be the current vehicle vehicle is also in, within the vehicle replacement policy, so...
I'd, I'd like to speak to a couple lines if I could, um, as she mentioned, the sand source bar site was just moved out to this year, because you want, you guys wanted to expedite that, when she was talking about increasing funds for the lobbyists, if you, um, if you look at your spreadsheets when you get to that, is the professional services line, and last year, we didn't do that at the beginning of the year, you guys added it halfway through, so that's just pointing out that it's accounting for a whole year next year, if you continue with that, and then also the inlet and beach protection board, um, entertained listening to UNCW last month, some of you were at that, and that includes their recommendation that they wanted to see some of those to come in, it didn't include all, um, it was about fifteen thousand four hundred dollars for them, um, I think their total was around thirty-seven, I have that in a folder here somewhere, but in talking to a friend, there were some things, he, thirty-two too was their total, but he didn't think that, um, they could complement us in all areas they presented, as far as what we were already doing, um, that money could be better spent if we picked two of the items that they represented, so that's what you're looking at in professional services as far as increases. Um, she did mention the training line, because the boards do want to travel more, more as far as attending meetings, and then the deeper wider, the number that you got at your last meeting was correct, that is one million and thirty-three thousand, the reason it gets to two is because in this budget, the Lockwood folly line, it also takes into account, if you guys want to do an AIWW crossing project next year, if it presents itself with the Vinwadner again, using the numbers that I gave you in your February memo, if those were to hold true, 'cause that's all we have to go on at this point. Um, last year the board showed, um, that they wanted to include everything up front as far as worst-case scenarios, if multiple projects came along, if you wanted to back that out and then do it as a budget amendment, if it came, then we would just need to know that, but this Lockwood folly line right now accounts for the deeper wider, one AIWW crossing project, and a merit merton that they may come back in between, the merit or merton if the court had them here in between for navigation, so if you decided to back any of that out, that, that line would be affected.
Probably the most important question is the funding stream on that, um, two-point-three million dollars is not in the, um, current year's collection for occupancy tax, so the question I would pose to the board is, would you, do you want to source this from the capital reserve beach and inlet fund, because it is beach nourishment, um, in, for the, for the east end.
But again, that two, two-point-three, that two-point-three number, that's a, a number that's a combined number.
Three projects.
That's two, that's two projects, yes.
Yeah, is that spelled out in, in the back or someplace else, or can we break that out so you can see it?
Um, let, let me answer the, one question here about spelling things out, one thing that we did not do in this, and that we will include, um, for your, in your next spreadsheet, is that we need to add a comment line, um, next to those, those, um, items, and Mandy covered it well in the, in the slides here, but we wanna add a comment line out to the right for some of those things that are spelled out, but to your question.
Yeah, good, good. Yeah, I mean, I, I just wanted to, you know, when I look at this initially, I see two, two-point-three, but I know it's not two-point-three, you know, it, it's, it's a number based on different projects that potentially are there and available for us, whether we take them or not, but we know we want, we know we want that sand out of the inlet.
But David, don't we have that much money in the B part fund already?
You have, uh, basically little over three in the sand reserve fund, sand and inlet maintenance fund, and, and in, in undesignedated B part, there's about three million dollars, and it's the board's decision on how you want to qualify what is erosion control and tourism related, that's totally within your call. So, technically, you use the whole thing for sand, I think that there may be, um, some discussion as to, you know, what's tourism related, you know, some of the, those edges there, um, should you want to make that discussion, but, um, to answer your question is, is that undesignedated amount could be made available for beach and inlet maintenance?
Um, fund sixty is the Canadian, um, dairy should be finishing up their dredge this spring, um, the budget that you see just maintains a program-ready project, and they just continue, continue ongoing, ongoing maintenance for survey, the contingency. So, that is all I have on the slide for now, so if you guys have any questions about the spreadsheets, we can, we can do.
Um, but that question isn't gonna go away, y'all, as far as where you want the funds, where the projects from, um, you know, 'cause absent from these slides, were the, were the three capital reserve funds on water, sewer, and beach nourishment, because we didn't know where you wanna take the money from, so at some point in time, you know, we, we're gonna need to fight our whole glide on that one, and so we can put something in front of it.
Okay, my, my thought on that is that we had a vigorous discussion last year, about three and a quarter million dollars into the beach sand fund, and that if we're going to spend a million dollars, we're definitely going to expend a million dollars, a little over a million dollars on the project that we approved, that that money should definitely come out of that three-point-two million dollar beach fund, that's, that was the purpose of setting it aside. We have the B part fund, it, it's easier to take it out of the sand fund, you don't have to justify it, and it's certainly an expense for what we set them, set that fund up for.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I just, I just want a little time to think about that, yeah.
Just, um, for the, uh, from the technical administrative perspective on that, um, if that is what the board wishes to do, there is, um, we, we don't spend money from a capital reserve fund, you actually have to tran... You actually have to transfer it back in to the operational budget and then expense it out. So that would be, and it may look a little funny because we haven't done that before, but that would be how that, how that happens whenever it shows up. And, and you have time to make that decision, it's just that we, we, we need some guidance on how, how to proceed.
So David, expenses on pitch thirty-nine. We have a transfer from general fund to the B part fund from the taxes that we collect for the payoff of the loan. We did eight oh six, which was the amount that we got from the seven percent tax increase last year, but we're only doing five sixty-four this year.
That's because you took, well, this is up for, this is y'all's decision, but I just based that on what you did last year because you took the two out and you put it into the beach nourishment fund. So it was only five in the transfer and then the two into the beach nourishment fund. But that is a decision that you guys can make later.
And the money's still in the sand business.
Yes.
I'd like to talk, just ask about the increase in communications for live streaming capabilities. Is the idea that this will get more public awareness and participation, which was one of the things that got discussed at objectives?
Well, it's probably a six of one and half dozen of the other. And I see it both ways, you know, if I, the, there's a lot of value of having interpersonal interaction by having people come to the meetings. The reality of our circumstance is we've got twenty-four hundred homes here and five hundred residents. So the majority of people live somewhere else. Would that improve, would that avail them of a participatory role? Most likely, we don't know if it would work, but, you know. So we, we went ahead and included a cost for that and it would be up to the board's side, whether they want to do that, provide that type of capability or not.
Just to expand on that a bit, I had discussion with David to ask him to investigate what it would cost to, to provide this type of service. For the very reason that we've discussed so many times, people who don't live here don't, don't get as much opportunity to have involvement. The initial cost was a fifty thousand dollar investment, which is not refundable, plus a thousand dollars a meeting, which seemed more than, more than what we think. A little bit excessive for what we were expecting. And we have no idea, I mean, five hundred people live on the island, but twelve people show up to meet. Twenty-four people live off here, twenty-four hundred people live off the island, but we don't know if twelve people look in at the, you know, the capability we paid for. So David did more review and came up with something that I think is, is more palatable. I had the cost of twenty, but we'd still have to evaluate it after a period of time to see how many people actually access it. Because, you know, if we get a decent percentage of people who access it, then it's all well and good. But if we're at the same point where people don't come to the meetings, don't access the capability, then, you know, why, why spend it? So I, I don't know.
One, one thing I'd, I'd add to that, Heather actually has the, the website of the group that we pulsed to see what type of capability. Perhaps we can share that with the board and you guys can go online and see exactly what we're talking about in terms of what it would do for us. One of the, one of the things that's in there is it's not only live streaming of the meetings, but in a webinar capacity. It, it saves the data and you, or saves the, saves the movie and you can go back to it and, and review it at your leisure. But also it syncs up in near real time with the agenda items. So like right now, we're posting YouTube and you got to listen, you know, way on through the whole thing to get down to the second hour of it. But it's got a digital agenda that is earmarked and you can point and click if you only want, you know, have interest in a specific thing on there. So I, I would suggest that Heather provide that link to you and you can go online, look at it, see if you like it or not.
I know how easy it is to give an answer that's not necessarily what you're feeling, but has there been, I thought that maybe with the water bill, ask the question? That we're considering doing live streaming, would this make it more likely that you would occasionally tune in to the meetings? And just see, you know, please respond to town hall, yes or no, and see if we get yes or no. I just, it's one of those that, I mean, I, I know what streaming and webinars can do and they are a lot easier and if people are aware, they might tune in. But it might be nice to seek a little bit of feedback of, would you be likely to occasionally follow a meeting?
Actually, that is no, we hadn't, hadn't considered it, I just, you know, researched what it would cost to provide that capability.
Not a bad idea.
And I'm not saying if we'd only get fifty people say, yeah, we would, that we say that's not enough, but we might get some responses that, that would show that they do want it.
How about if I suggest that we send that to y'all, that link, and you see exactly what it is and, what's today? I don't know, I think it might be too late to go out on this water bill, I think it's already gone out tonight, so it has to be, it has to be next month, so we've got three big slides. But we can send that out and maybe we could put a peanut blast out. Blast question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I need to make one more comment that I just found on page forty-eight of your spreadsheets, unless Mandy can tell me a different line that it may have gone into. And I'd just like to take a moment to commend her because we had to have our inputs in and that's like February twenty-second and then things happened in the meantime and we run sticky notes to her. Posted notes is like, here, please add this and decrease that. And the fire substation, Starfish Fire Station upgrade, it shows ten, five for nineteen, twenty. That's because they need two heaters there, both at five thousand a piece, based on an estimate that Chris got, because he normally gets those estimates and helps out there. But that should also probably look closer to twenty thousand because they had a gutter that was damaged in Florence. When the gutter came down, when the contractor went up to give us our estimate for repairs there, there is rot underneath. And the contractor is saying he won't know exactly how bad it is until he gets in there, but the estimate is somewhere between six and twelve thousand dollars. And we don't have the money to do that in this budget year. So unless we do a budget amendment, that line should be closer to.
It's twenty-five, five, it just didn't get transferred over.
Transferred over, okay, but it is in there.
Okay, she said she hasn't included a recent on the sheet.
Sounds like the DST, the contractor's been talking to the same guy we've been talking to on Starfish Station upgrade. We won't know how long it's going to be closed until we start poking holes in it.
So we, we pay for upgrades to the facilities and things like that, are we in any way responsible for their pensions?
No, no, we just provide the house, they live in it.
If the state's just ready to approve, they can pension them and increase.
Well, now, the, the volunteer rescue squad is a charter corporation and they're a bit different. Basically, our contract with the fire department is that they provide fire services, emergency services to the town in exchange for the ability to collect the county's fire fees. So we, 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 we don't pay anything other than providing the house and providing services. But we still have to maintain that, that structure and pay the light bill.
So the nineteen, twenty budget numbers, they include the recommendations that the town staff had recommended? I just, you know, skimmed over them lightly and it looks like salaries for the, for the police department. So we've already got that in there, the recommendations, yes.
Yes, we include the new vehicles, people, stuff like that.
On, on page forty, under administrative expenses and the roof insurance.
Yeah, those numbers didn't get transferred either, so I can give you those numbers now if you want them.
That would help.
The eighteen, nineteen is seven, four, twenty-three, or no, seven, four, twenty, sorry. And then the nineteen, twenty was seventy-three, nine, four, nine, forty-one.
Okay, just with the zero.
Yeah, yeah, it just didn't, calculations.
Hey, we are, I'm asleep at the wheel or we just stuck in the sand here. Stuck in the sand. You really got anything else?
I don't have anything else at this point.
Staff, anybody got anything else? Not a moment, so if there's a motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Second. Discussion here and there, all in favor, say aye.
Next workshop is twenty-four.